Twenty twenty-one meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Dana Robinson to come forward to give us the invitation.
He's not here.
He's not here yet.
We thought they might come in, so I think we're ready for.
It's Pastor, Pastor Weems.
So, we're going to defer to Pastor Weems.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect us on a daily basis. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can ask before you be seated, this past week, we lost thirteen soldiers in Afghanistan. So if we could have a moment of silence for those brave young men, Wendy? Thank you. So it just reiterated, as we always say, the price of freedom, it's not free. And we lost thirteen brave individuals last week, and we cannot forget those people. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion.
Who to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, that we approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Thank you. So I do have a couple of public service announcements. The schools have reopened, and we have buses on the road. This morning, it was a little different coming in here. Just want to remind everyone to pay a little extra attention that we haven't seen buses on the road in quite a while. So we need to readjust and make sure that we're a little extra cautious, especially on the back roads, those times of day when the buses are traveling. The other thing is, we have a little storm coming this way. We expect to get here late tomorrow into Thursday. Right now, according to the weather reports we get, Calver County has, you know, winds of up to thirty miles an hour, maybe two to four inches of rain. So for those of you that live in low-lying areas, just make sure you pay attention to the weather, current forecast, and you're prepared. I believe they're doing sandbags down at the county's service center in Barstow. So if you feel a need, you can go by there and get your sandbags filled, and pay attention, and just be alert. So I think that's all I have. There's nothing else. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. I believe I have the first one, which is, we're celebrating Preparedness Month. Is anybody in the audience coming up?
Commissioners, good morning. Mike Grierson, Emergency Management Division Chief. Myself and staff are here for your proclamation reading.
Before I do this, did I get the storm stuff right?
You did, actually. I was listening earlier, and I was glad to hear, yeah, it's two to four inches is what they're saying right now. We're in that band, a little bit, I would say, west of ninety-five, four to six inches is what they're looking at, but right now, we're two to four. And probably tomorrow evening through, through Thursday is what they're calling. We have a two o'clock call, as you know. If I hear anything significant, I will certainly make sure I reach out and let you know.
So can people go to the website? Can people go to the website to check current weather status?
So there are some links there. We don't traditionally put that information on our website. There are so many sites that they can go to, as I use them, and they're readily available through NOAA. And that's where we go, actually, to get that same information. So they can go to those sites as well to get that.
Thank you. So whereas emergency preparedness is the shared responsibility of the entire nation, every community, business, family, and individual has a role in planning and preparing for emergencies and disasters of all kinds. And whereas Maryland Preparedness Month provides an opportunity to highlight the important role of citizens as they prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, schools, and communities. This nationwide observance encourages all Americans to learn more about ways to prepare for all types of emergencies, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas the United States Department of Homeland Security and Citizen Corps urge all Americans to take time to get an emergency supply kit, make a family emergency plan, be informed about different threats and their appropriate responses, and get involved in preparing their community. And whereas, Calver County recognizes the importance of preparing for potential emergencies and is proud to observe appropriate events, preparedness information, and activities this month. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that September twenty twenty-one be known as Calver County Preparedness Month. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are urged to join with the Calver County Department of Public Safety and Division of Emergency Management in carrying the message of preparedness to the community. Given under our hands and seal this thirty-first day of August twenty twenty-one, signed by all five. Thank you.
Can I have all the staff up for the picture?
Come on. You want us to come up there, or stand back here?
I'll stand back here.
Yeah, we'll stand back here.
You can't see the lens, can't see the. Steve, I need you to find the rocket. There you go. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next proclamation is Forget Me Not Month. Commissioner Gadway?
Good morning. Is there anyone here for the Forget Me Not Month? DAV? Welcome.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Glenda Willhite. I'm the commander of Chapter Twenty-Six. We serve St. Mary's and Southern Calver County. We are here today to receive a proclamation for Forget Me Not. This is tales, getting donations to help us, to help other veterans. We find them homes, we help them get food, we provide ramps for those who are disabled. We do claims, we've done two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand claims in the course of one year. And we are the only chapter in the state that has a PTSD group for mental health. And we're very proud of that. Today, I have with me my chief of staff, Harry Metzler, and my special op guy, Ray Nargay. And it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Pleasure's ours.
And today being a day in history where we've looked at what happened yesterday in Afghanistan, and to reiterate what you had said, not all disabilities are physical, nor can be seen.
That is correct.
And I anticipate that your organization, as well as the VA, over the coming weeks and months, is going to be dealing with more of that than they have in the past. So God bless you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you very much. It's our pleasure.
Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County desires to recognize those who have served our great nation in times of war and peace. And whereas, each year, the Disabled American Veterans Department of Maryland distributes simulated Forget Me Not's as a reminder of the lasting debt of gratitude to all who have bravely fought to protect our freedom. And whereas, during this campaign, we remember those veterans who gave some, or gave all, in service of this great country. And whereas, the proceeds of this annual Forget Me Not campaign are used for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and well, as their families. And whereas, Calver County is proud to join in celebrating the Forget Me Not distribution, which will be conducted during the month of September. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of September be known as Forget Me Not Month. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of Commissioners asks all citizens to commemorate the sacrifice of disabled veterans in our county and our country. Given under our hands and seal this thirty-first day of August twenty twenty-one, signed by all our commissioners.
Good morning. Glad to see you folks today. We're coming down?
Okay.
Somebody tall like Nate here.
Okay. I won't stand up.
So I can try to be politically correct.
Yes, exactly, so it looks a bit bad.
So time now to plug everybody? One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next proclamation on the list is for Calvert Meals on Wheels. Mr. McHart?
Mr. McHart?
Do we have somebody?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to see you this morning. It's great to be here, to accept a proclamation on behalf of Calvert Meals on Wheels, Inc., and all the wonderful volunteers, and with our partner, Calvert Office on Aging.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Cheryl Henley. I'm the president of Calvert Meals on Wheels.
Thank you.
And I'm here with Cheryl Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. I just wanted to emphasize how critical the Meals on Wheels service has been for our community of seniors and disabled in our community this year, more so than any other year. They were there for them in a time of severe social isolation, and were able to connect with them in a way they weren't getting from anybody else. And obviously, they need the food, but what they bring is so much more important than that. So we're just really grateful for the organization and all the volunteers, because they've made a huge difference.
I got to meet this young lady at the Dunkin' Donuts ribbon cutting.
Yes, and I'd just like to say, we really, really appreciate all of the support that we get from you guys. It's really appreciated. And we brought along what I call our swag bags for everybody. So they're in order.
So, so we talked earlier during our staff meeting about the volunteers that worked through COVID. And you all played such a nautical role, taking care of those citizens that can't get out, providing them meals and some socialization. And, you know, we have so many great volunteers in Calver County that didn't let a little COVID stop them, continued to do their work. So on behalf of all of us, we truly, truly appreciate what you've done for our citizens.
Thank you.
Come on down, is there some folks that you have here with you as well?
They're busy delivering meals.
Probably so.
They couldn't make it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very proud.
Commissioner Hart, you have another bag to carry around.
I know. So, and really to reiterate what Commissioner Hand said, you know, it was just traumatizing to so many folks when COVID hit. How am I going to get out to eat? They didn't know, you know? People that were normally going to come around were scared, you know? I mean, but you folks kept going, you know? And it would be easy to say, hey, it's not safe. I'm not going to go. And no one would, but you guys kept going. And I just have always thought, this is one of the most incredible programs. We have a lot in this county, but this is food. Everyone on the planet, everything has to eat. And without you folks, there's some people that don't eat. So we just can't thank you enough. And I want to read this for you. It says, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County and the Office on Aging wish to pay tribute to the many local citizens who have chosen to take time out of their demanding lives to help make the Calvert Meals on Wheels program so successful and make a significant positive contribution to the social well-being of Calver seniors. And whereas the Calvert Meals on Wheels Board would like to acknowledge these dedicated volunteers, these individuals have become a supportive and essential force for Calvert Meals on Wheels in the community. And the volunteers of Meals on Wheels have provided invaluable service to our senior participants by serving as the board members, drivers, food delivers, and volunteer coordinators. And whereas the Calvert Meals on Wheels have provided meals to their homebound for thirty-nine years. Isn't that something? I mean, I'm not that old yet, but you know. It does, it does. And whereas the vital to our future as caring and productive nation and the senior citizens of Calver County and the Office on Aging wish to honor these volunteers. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens is hereby extended to all who volunteer with Calvert Meals on Wheels to serve the senior population and support the Office on Aging. Be it further proclaimed that we commend all those committed to providing outreach, advocacy, and services to people living with disabilities and seniors in Calver County. Given under our hands and seal this thirty-first day of August twenty-one, signed by all five commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Check out my shirt.
So the next item on the list is Proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day. Commissioner McConkey?
Candace, you want to come up and say a few words?
Good morning, and thanks for allowing us to be here. I'm Candace DiAgostino, the coordinator of the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse. I do have a few folks here today who have been instrumental in our prevention, recovery, and treatment outreach for this event. Would you allow me to introduce them, have them come up, and then read the proclamation?
Sure.
Perfect. And I'll try not to forget anyone like I did last time. I'll start with Casa Board members. We have Joanne Faber Tyrell, Craig Contra, Lieutenant Jimmy Marins from the Commander of the State Police Barrack, Lieutenant Colonel Dave McDowell. We have Doris McDonald, who's the Director of Calver County Behavioral Health, Anita Ray with Calver County Behavioral Health Grant Programs, Denise Dickerson, who is the Clinical Supervisor of the Criminal Justice and Crisis Response Programs, Jason Phelan, who is with Calver Crisis Response, Jane Bennetts, who's with Emmanuel Church Celebrate Recovery, and a member of the Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee. Let's see, did Andrea, oh, Andrea Finglin McDonald, who's the local behavioral health authority, and also a member of the Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee. And I did want to point out two people who could not be here today, who were extremely instrumental in today's events. Sandy Mattingly with Positive Vibes, and Keith Partick, who's a council member with Chesapeake Beach. So I just want to let everyone know that these folks here are instrumental in everything that's happening today on International Overdose Awareness Day. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say, Candace, you are relentless and do an amazing job. And you have a group of people that just never stop working, and we can't thank you guys enough.
Thank you. It's all about partnership. So I thank everyone who's standing up there today, because you know it's a team effort, and we can't do it all alone. So thanks, thanks, everyone, and thanks for allowing us to be here.
All right, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee, and Calver County Advocacy Partners are sponsoring International Overdose Awareness Day in Calver County. And whereas, we recognize the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day as remembering loved ones lost to overdose, supporting those in recovery, and ending the stigma of drug-related deaths. And whereas, since two thousand fifteen, Calver County has lost one-hundred-and-forty-three residents to overdose deaths, with counties more affected forever. We resolve to play our part in reducing the toll of overdoses in our community. And whereas, we affirm that overdose does not discriminate, and the people affected by overdose are family, friends, and coworkers who are deserving, deserving of our love, compassion, and support. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one be known as International Overdose Awareness Day in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are called upon to join the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee, and their advocacy partners to support overdose awareness initiatives and participate in International Overdose Awareness Day activities. Given under our hands and seal this thirty-first day of August two thousand twenty-one. How you doing? You trying to break my.
You can't take it away and knock it all down.
Four pictures.
Oh, go for it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am.
We tried to.
I know, you can't turn it off.
You can only tell if the eyes. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a public service announcement?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Before I head out, I just wanted to remind everyone about the glow vigil tonight at the North Beach Pavilion from seven to nine. We'll have the vigil of memorial name-reading, and then a memorial lost souls exhibit down there. And then also throughout the day, today, we're offering Narcan training Southern Community Center from eleven to two, and then again from six to eight. And then today at Harriet Brown Community Center, eleven AM to two PM. And at Northeast Community Center this evening from five-thirty to eight-thirty. And we invite anyone who needs a Narcan training and a free Narcan kit to come out to those events. The training doesn't take two to three hours. It's like a ten or fifteen-minute training. So folks will be in and out very quickly.
And where's the pavilion at tonight?
North Beach Pavilion.
Okay, North Beach.
Did I, I know my mask.
Yep.
Okay, seven to nine, so we hope everyone can stop in. And if you have purple light bulbs, please turn those on tonight. I know the courthouse is going to be lit, the hospital, a lot of other local businesses, churches, and fire and rescue squads. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the final proclamation is for retirement. Commissioner Weems?
Good Mary Treese, please come forward, madam. Please, please, Mary Treese. Whereas, Mary Treese Nash, Office Manager for the Calver County Health Department, is retiring on September first, twenty twenty-one, after dedicating over thirty years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calver County and the state of Maryland. And whereas, Mary Treese Nash's admirable career began on January ninth, nineteen ninety-one, as Office Assistant Two for the Abused Persons Program. She then accepted a position as the Office Manager for the Behavioral Health Division on July eighteenth, two thousand seven. Mary Treese has provided reliable and exemplary service during her career, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, and admiration from Calver County citizens and fellow constituents who had the pleasure to work with her. And whereas, Mary Treese's commendable and distinguished service has been demonstrated with a spirit of pride and commitment throughout her exemplary career with the Calver County Health Department. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County presents this proclamation as a tribute to all of her outstanding accomplishments during her distinguished career, thereby recognizing this amazing woman who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calver County citizens. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens is hereby extended to Mary Treese Nash on her retirement after thirty years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins with the community, her coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all of her future endeavors. Given under our hands and seal this thirty-first day of August twenty twenty-one. Mary Treese. Yes. And do you have any? Yes, yes. Congratulations. Do we have any family members, some special guests? Kirk?
And then there's the whole office.
All right. Very good, very good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Can we do it without masks? This is going on my brag wall.
Absolutely. Just slightly, yeah, of course. Now your angles, here we go. And, one, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you can get the picture. Yeah.
She's going to retire, isn't she?
It's going to change your life, too.
Thank you, buddy.
That was good, that was good.
Thank you.
Do you want me to take out with your phone?
Let's do it again.
Yes, please. Got it. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
I promise to do something for you.
So many folks retiring, and they're busy in everywhere. You know?
Everything's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Steve got two hugs. Not that I'm keeping track.
Jalous.
Yeah.
That was on camera, by the way.
Mary Treese, if you want to say anything, you're welcome to the mic.
I just wanted to say what an honor and pleasure it's been to serve here.
I just wanted to say what an honor and pleasure it's been to serve here in this county, serve the citizens. I was the volunteer coordinator for the Health Department, and we brought in thousands of dollars of service for the community with flu clinics and the like. And so it's been an honor and a pleasure, and I encourage everyone to get involved in their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is new business item one, Department of Finance and Budget, Award Recommendation ITB 2021-091. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, the subject of this memo is for the ITB 2021-091 Transportation Services for Paper and Commingled Recyclable Materials Award Recommendation. I do have Charlotte from Merkament on the line if you have any questions regarding this memo. Background. The purpose of this contract is to establish a contract with one or more contractors to provide transportation services for paper and commingled recyclable materials on an as-needed or scheduled basis. The bid provided for two options. Option one, the contractor provided tractor and trailer. And option two, the contractor provided tractor to haul Calver County's supplied trailer. This contract is for one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms. Discussion. During the weeks of June 29, 2021, and July 6, 2021, advertisements appeared in two local newspapers, and the E. Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, and the county's Facebook soliciting bids for reference contracts. One proposal was received and opened during a virtual bid opening on July 22, 2021. The bid tabulation from the bid opening and bid comparison are attached, see attachments B, C respectively. The bids were thoroughly reviewed, and it was determined to be in the county's best interest to award option two. The lowest apparent bidder for option two, Southern Trucking, Trucking, Inc., meets all the requirements of the specifications. Reference checks, reference check for Southern Trucking, Inc., provided satisfactory comments. Fiscal impact. Funding for this contract has been allocated in the Solid Waste Recycling Contracted Service Account. Conclusion recommendation. In accordance with Section 6-101 of the Code of Public Law, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the unit-priced contract for option two to Southern Trucking, Inc. of Mechanicsville, Maryland, 206-59. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second that we adopt staff's recommended findings and award the unit-priced contract for option two to Southern Trucking Incorporated. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. President, I would just like to thank Budget and Finance for all their diligent and hard work on doing all these and pouring through and finding the proper and right responses to these.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under new business is the Forward Funding Resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners. Veronica Atkinson, Capital Projects Analyst, Finance and Budget. Background. There are several projects in the FY '22 capital budget that will be funded through the sale of general obligation bonds. We plan to issue bonds in the fall of 2021. We plan to settle on the MDE loans once the county prepares to start construction of the projects. In the event funds are expended for the below projects prior to the bond sale or loan closing, a resolution of intent to reimburse is required to reimburse the general fund once the bonds have been sold or the loans have been settled. Discussion. Table one are our general obligation bonds. The total is $84,807,873. Our table two are the MDE loans. There are two of those, and they total $2,117,500. Fiscal impact is as described above. Conclusion recommendation. We request that the Board of County Commissioners sign the attached resolution which indicates the intent to reimburse the county for expenditures on specific projects that will be funded by the future sale of general obligation bonds.
Veronica, if you wouldn't mind, could you read through the projects, just so the public understands what?
So these projects are all projects that have a balance of bonds. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we would sell the bonds for all of these projects, it just covers us in case we do or have an early bond sale next year. So our first project is Beach Elementary Construction, Northern Middle Construction. That mainly contributes to the onsite stormwater, what is it, water sewer pump that they had to replace based on the new school, Northern High. The next one is Northern High School. Mount Harmony Elementary. Board of Education Systemic Projects. County Office Building. Twin Beach's Library, new building. Ward Farm. Dunkirk District Park upgrades, tennis court, restroom, snack bar, and splash pad. Calvert Marine Museum Exhibition Building. Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse. Little Cove Point Road Care Improvements. West Stairs Beach Road Improvements. Ball Road Elliptical Culvert Replayer. St. Leonard Round, St. Leonard Road Widening, sorry. Prince Frederick Loop Road. Fairground Road. Boyd's Turn Road. Dow Newton Road. Appeal Salt Barn. Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department, that would be for equipment. Volunteer Fire and Rescue, that would be for construction of new facilities. The 800 megahertz digital communication system. Detention Center Inmate Program. Career EMS Apparatus. Huntington Company Apparatus. Prince Frederick Company Construction, that would be the final construction of that facility. North Beach, which be Fire Department is equipment. Appeal Landfill Transfer Station. Calvert Memorial Wastewater Pump Station. Back Creek Loop. Barstow. Convenience Center Upgrade. Chesapeake Heights Water Treatment. Cove Point Water Sewer System Rehabilitation. Prince Frederick Boulevard Water Main. Paris Oak Pump Station. Wastewater Treatment Plant. Bio-Solid Handling. Wastewater Treatment Plant Holding Ponds. Solomon's Wastewater Treatment Plant Septage Receiving Upgrade. Prince Frederick Wastewater Treatment Plant Number Two Plant Improvements. Prince Frederick Wastewater Treatment Plant Number One Plant Upgrades. Prince Frederick Pump Station Improvements. Highland Low Pressure Sewer System. Hedworth's Pumping Station Upgrade. For the MDE loans, it would be Chesapeake Heights, Dares Beach Well and Water Main, and Breezy Point Park Living Shoreline Project. These are proposed projects.
So, and just so everybody in the public understands, it's a resolution to authorize, but as you said, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to sell all 84 million. And I just wanted the public to understand it's a lot of projects.
Yes.
And it's completion of some projects, it's starting projects, so, and it, can, can they go to the website and if they want to see that, is there a place they can go?
Well, it was posted for today's agenda, but also these projects are all projects that were adopted in the budget. So some of these projects could be legacy back five, six, seven years, so you would find them in those budgets.
The CIP.
CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, yes.
Right. And some of those maybe not haven't been approved for?
All of the projects that I've listed are adopted projects, so.
In the CIP?
In the CIP, yes.
Some are in the out years.
Yes.
Northern Middle is what caught my attention.
Yeah, Northern Middle's not the construction project, it's for their water sewer plant onsite, it's something that they have to upgrade based on the Northern High's construction, it was a requirement, and it's actually onsite at Northern Middle.
Got you, so that's not for construction of a new school.
No, no. Yeah, we pushed that.
Repair.
Yes.
Just want to make sure people understand where we are. So, thank you, because I didn't warn you I was going to do that.
Yeah, that's fine. We are constructing Beach Elementary, that's the only active one we have.
Yes, we are. So, any other questions? I'm sorry. Good? So the chair would entertain a motion if there are no further questions.
Move to approve.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt the Forward Funding Resolution which indicates the intent to reimburse the county for expenditures on specific projects that will be funded by the future sale of the general obligation bonds. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a work session, Department of Planning and Zoning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm with you this morning to give you a little history on residential density, and how we got to where we are today in the county. I'm going to start with the definition from the Calver County Zoning Ordinance. It defines density as the number of dwelling units excluding accessory apartments per unit of land. So it's how many houses, apartments, townhouses there are on a unit of land. So the Comprehensive Plan, as you know, is the goals and visions of the county. And in 1967, our first Comprehensive Plan, they talked about laying the groundwork. And in that Comprehensive Plan, there was a recommendation for three-acre lot zoning. There again, that's a goal and a vision, and then that was adopted in the Calver County Zoning Ordinance following that Comprehensive Plan adoption. In 1974, what's also known as the Pleasant Peninsula Plan, it talked about controlling our own destiny, planning for slow growth. In 1983, they talked about maintaining the rural character and also promoting a strong economy. And it was in this Comprehensive Plan that they established the concept of town centers. Now, the town centers didn't get adopted until the zoning ordinance. Then in 1997, they established 10 visions. In 2004, they talked of staying the course to keep those visions from 1997. In 2010, it was a minor update to the Comprehensive Plan just to adopt some state laws that had been adopted. And most recently, in 2019, the Comprehensive Plan update, most recently adopted, strengthened the goals of the previous Comprehensive Plans. And I want to note, since 2019, there have been no changes to the zoning regarding density. Everything that is in place today as far as rules and regulations for density predate that 2019 Comprehensive Plan. We're working on an update, but nothing's changed.
And what was that date again? I'm sorry.
For the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
2006 was the last major update, although we've done probably 50 text amendments since then. But the, the date of the original zoning ordinance that we currently work under is 2006.
And those text amendments, they were basically like cleaning up things, right?
Yeah, it was as.
They weren't major.
Yeah, like if two properties together had two different zonings kind of thing.
There was that, there were map amendments to zoning, there were, and I'm actually going to talk about one that specifically affected density, but for the most part, the text amendments did not affect density per se. They were uses on the use charts to allow things that maybe weren't permitted originally when we did the update. But there again, I will talk about what specifically affected density.
So what about the Newtown district?
The Newtown district is one of those that I'll, I'll be talking about later on.
So Mary Beth, over the, since 2019 to now, which is about 10 years, what percentage growth has Calver County seen?
So the census just came out, and we have had a 4.6% growth in the county from 2010 to 2020.
4.67.
4.6%.
Okay. I thought it was under 1% is what was.
Over, I have, we went from.
Years like that, but I guess the average?
I thought every 10 years is under 1%.
The average of that is .46 per year over 10 years.
.46%.
It's the total growth that you talked about over 10 years.
Right, so we went from 88,737 in 2010 to 92,783 in 2020, and that percent change is 4.6%.
Some other question is, is are we the slowest growing county in Maryland?
We are not.
We're not?
There were some negative, some counties that lost population.
Where do we rank with, with that?
In Southern Maryland, we're the lowest of the three counties. In the overall state, I just happen to have that chart with me. I believe there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 counties less than us. But I can certainly get you a copy of this.
Yeah. How many counties are there approximately?
I think there's 24 counties, if I'm correct.
23 counties and one jurisdiction.
Right, because Baltimore City's on there, yes.
Right.
So I'll make.
So we're right in the middle. We're pretty much in the middle.
Yeah, on the lower end of half, yeah, less than half. But I will make sure that you all get a copy of this.
Okay, great.
So during the history of the Comprehensive Plans, the county commissioners have done two downzonings. In 1999, whereas you do a calculation for how much you can develop a property, at that time, they reduced it by two. So if you had a property where you could build five lots, you had to divide by two, I believe, I'm going to do one that I don't have to round, let's say you could do six lots, you have, divided by two, you could do three lots, and then you would have to buy TDRs to buy back up to those six lots. In 2003, they reduced it further, so that now you divide it by four. So let's take eight, say you could build eight lots, you divide by four, that's two. In order to build those eight lots, you would have to buy TDRs for six lots to get back to what's called your conventional density. And conventional density is just defined as the maximum number of lots that can be created from a property after subtracting wetland acres, and after factoring in exception lots, which the property may be eligible, just because of how old the lots, the parcels of record are.
And those two items were done to slow down the growth.
They were. And they still are in effect today. When we calculate zoning, those calculations occur. And then there again, you have to buy TDRs to buy back up to your, the maximum density.
And, and Mary Beth, I mean, we're going to elaborate, I'm sure, on various statements, but at that time, we were building a school every year.
That's correct.
And it was astronomical growth.
Yes, we were having very much considerable more growth than we're having now.
Eight or 9% or something like that, a year.
Yeah.
A year. That's all.
Okay. Okay. So something else that goes into density calculations, certainly land preservation. In 1978, the goal was to preserve 20,000. In nineteen seventy-eight, the goal was to preserve twenty thousand acres of farm and forest. That was increased in nineteen ninety-seven when we hit that goal of two, twenty thousand acres and the goal was then increased to forty thousand. We have not yet hit that forty thousand. We're currently, um, over thirty-two thousand, not quite thirty-three thousand acres preserved through county and state preservation easements in the county.
How does that compare to southern Maryland in general of like Saint Mary's and Calvert, I mean, uh, Saint Mary's and Charles preserving land acreage wise? I know there are bigger counties in us, but are they doing, are they preserving land too?
They are. And, and certainly the mouth easement, which is the Maryland State easement for preserving land, um, is available throughout the county. Now specifically for their county-specific preservation, I don't know, but I can certainly find out.
Right.
Mary Beth, do we know what the delta is of what's left that potentially could be preserved in Calvert County?
I do not. And I'm wondering how we could calculate that, because any land has the potential of either preserving or developing.
Yeah, I didn't know if we tracked.
But we could track undeveloped. We could find that out.
How, how, like, I know since nineteen eighty-seven, the goal increased, but how likely is it, how soon would it, how long will it take for us to reach that forty thousand, do you think? Would be another ten years or another twenty years?
There's a lot of factors that go into that, but we currently have a moratorium on creating new agricultural preservation districts. So that's not contributing at all. We're not creating, we're not preserving any land through the county's land preservation. Although, um, we do have existing agricultural preservation districts that haven't sold any T D Rs yet. And, um, we would need them to, to at least sell one T D R for that land to be truly preserved. So, you know, there's a lot of different things that could enter into that. But they can still be doing state easements, um.
Right. And once you sell one T D R, you're locked in.
You're locked in.
So we would count the perfect hundred acre farm, if you sold one T D R, we would count that hundred acres as preserved, even though there are ninety-nine T D Rs that still need to be.
That's correct.
Accounted for somewhere.
Yes, but we would be able to say that that is fully, is preserved as soon as that one T D R is sold.
Right. And we've had some issues with mouth because of the requirements of mouth and the small tracts of land that we have meeting those criteria for mouth to be as active as it could be here in Calvert County.
That's true.
Yeah. And we, I'm sorry, one more.
No, that's okay.
And we, uh, last year, year before last, we signed an agreement with, uh, N R C D.
Yes.
To help, so to date, have they preserved any land?
I know that one's in the works in the southern county. Um, not sure how far it is. Um, and I think Ron Marnie's on the line and he may be able to answer that question.
Uh, that's okay.
Okay, but we'll get, we'll get that information for you.
Mr. Gadway?
All right. Mary Beth, I, I caught something you said just a second ago. Please help me and remind me, or help me understand what you said. I think you said something about there is currently a moratorium on preservation?
On creating new agricultural preservation districts. So in two thousand thirteen, the commissioners felt that there were too many transferable development rights or T D Rs out there. And they said, you know, we need to take care of the farmers who have already committed to preserving their farmland. Help them sell their T D Rs by not flooding the market with more.
Gotcha.
So the commissioners put a moratorium so we don't create new agricultural currently. Um, that moratorium could be lifted by a decision by the commissioners in any town.
Got you. Thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
The concern was Commissioner Gadway that there's this inventory of T D Rs, just as I mentioned, on the perfect hundred acre farm. And based on the amount of development that we see, would it use up the T D Rs that already certified? So there was concern about creating more T D Rs when we're not sure there's a market for the ones we've already certified. It's my understanding why the moratorium was put in place.
Yes.
So, and I don't know what the rate of consumption of T D Rs is for this past year, but there's about nine, eight or nine thousand T D Rs currently certified. And there are A P Ds approved that have not sold T D Rs that account for maybe another three thousand T D Rs. So there could be a potential of twelve thousand T D Rs already out there. And we're not sure that based on current rules and regulations, there's enough development left to use those up.
Right. So if you created more, it would cause the value of them to go down also.
Right, 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 right. Because the value of the T D Rs, because of demand, had slipped to.
Well, it went from, it was as high as nine thousand at one time, right?
I think eight is as high as we have certified or seven or eight thousand.
Initially, it hit nine for like one year. Yeah, I believe so.
And it's back down to two, so there's not much interest to sell a T D R for two thousand dollars.
Right.
We're hoping.
Started.
Well, it's hard when, when it was at nine, you know what I mean? So people are hoping it, it's like the stock market, it will get reached back to that point and it hasn't, so.
That's what happens when you get greedy.
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Sorry. Any other questions?
This is actually just a comment on that, uh, forty thousand acres, um. According to my tier mapping, I just did the calculation, there's eighty-two thousand fifty-eight acres in the entire county. And Ms. Carolyn, um, you are the repository of information, but I just took all the tier one, two, three, four, and the beaches. So just, just for the public and our, our informational purposes.
So you're saying total, Calvert County total, top to bottom?
Eighty-two thousand.
So you're preserving half of it?
Hopefully.
Half of the whole county.
And that includes, that's not available, that's everything.
That's everything, right. So the delta is what hasn't been preserved and what's already developed.
Yes.
So I guess we could do some rough calculations, get a pretty good idea of that.
If we wanted to get to forty, we would have half.
Yes.
Half the county preserved.
Right.
Yes.
So. Which is unheard of in any other county, I'm sure.
No, that, that's a great analogy. That's, that's a great number.
I would imagine that's unheard of in any other county in Maryland.
Uh, probably not.
No?
No, not in Kent County.
I'm talking about preserved.
Kent County.
Yeah.
I'm talking about preserved.
Yes.
Yeah. Maybe Carroll County. There are some counties out here that have used the mouth program very well. And Kent County has actually lost population in the last twenty years. And they've done an excellent job of preserving agricultural land through programs and through zoning, because it's one house to thirty acres.
Really?
I guess they don't like neighbors.
They like rural settings.
Right.
Well, you also have to bear in mind, we're the smallest county in the state of Maryland.
True.
Thirty-five miles long, nine miles wide. So that's a variable in all of it as well.
How deep is the water, Steve?
Uh, at the base of the Thomas Johnson Bridge, approximately.
Two hundred, ain't it?
It's right around a hun- uh, two, yes, a hundred and ninety-one.
Yeah, I know. That is deep.
It is.
Any other questions, Commissioner McConkey?
He's got it. I'm telling you, don't.
I'm just, I can't write these statistics down fast enough.
He wins all day, trust me.
For history, he's my call. For TV, you're my call.
Oh, yeah, TV shows, oh my god.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth, I read that grass.
In nineteen seventy-eight, the agricultural preservation began with the creation of agricultural preservation districts or A P Ds, which then in turn, um, created the transfer development rights, T D Rs. The T D Rs transfer development from rural farms and forest areas to transfer zones, which are designated receiving areas, designated for growth. So the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board was actually formed in nineteen seventy-eight. And at that time, T D Rs were, um, one acre even. So you, if, for every acre you had, you got one T D R. And that was maintained through the two down zonings. So as you would be able to develop your property less, you were still getting T D R credits for that down zoning. So that could have contributed to some of the excess T D Rs we were talking about earlier.
And the program was always changing.
It, it has evolved.
Demand, you know, there was a point where developers were screaming, we needed more T D Rs because they got up to nine thousand dollars and we did allow some properties in that we should never have allowed. We allowed vacant lots to certify T D Rs. We shouldn't have done that, but we learned from our mistakes. And, uh, the program at one point was nationally recognized as the best preservation program in the country. But then the building bubble burst and now we are where we are.
Very true. In nineteen ninety-three, the purchase and retirement or PAR and the, and then in nineteen ninety-seven, the leveraging and retirement LAR programs began to allow the county to purchase and or leverage the purchase of T D Rs to permanently preserve land with A P Ds. And we just went through, um, setting the price for this year's PAR. So for anyone that's watching, um, please take advantage. Um, there's information on our website. You can call our office. Forty-five hundred dollars is the current PAR price. To date, five thousand seven hundred and fifty-two T D Rs have been purchased and retired through PAR and LAR, permanently preserving land and removing the density potential. So whereas the T D Rs can be bought and sold on the market, um, for development, those that come through the PAR and LAR program are permanently preserved and there will be no density based on those T D Rs. Um, in addition to PAR and LAR, um, we have brought before the commissioners recommendations from the T D R committee to spur additional T D R sales. And that includes the T D R reserve, which we've created as a pilot program to, for the county to purchase T D Rs and then to sell to developers for development. And we, um, have also, you approved signing a resolution to recommit a portion of the recrodation tax collected to fund land preservation. There again, this all circles back to density. In nineteen eighty-three, the comprehensive plan established the town center concept. The, following that, there was a comprehensive rezoning in nineteen eighty-four, which created the town center zoning district. At that time, it was just a general T C or town center district. There weren't individual, um, specific, um, town centers until each of the town center master plans and zoning ordinances were adopted. Went too far. Oh, there we go. So I've listed the dates of the adoption. Um, Solomon's was actually the first in nineteen eighty-six, which then again was updated in two thousand nine. Dunkirk was in eighty-seven, Prince Frederick, um, in eighty-nine, then the zoning ordinance in ninety-two, Huntington in nineteen ninety-three, Saint Leonard ninety-five. And only the master plan for Saint Leonard was updated in two thousand thirteen. Owings in two thousand and Lesby in two thousand two. We are currently working on the update to the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan as well as the Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan. So once those are, um, go through the adoption process, we'll be following shortly after with the update of their zoning ordinances. So I know this chart's kind of hard to read. Um, I, I wanted to show how the density varies through all of the town centers. And I think the important thing to note on here is that the Newtown district in Prince Frederick has the highest density. It's twenty-four units per acre. However, we have not seen anyone be able to develop to that density.
So why, why was that done?
It was a request that was submitted, um, as a text amendment. And all text amendments, we bring, all requests, um, we bring before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. It went through the text amendment process and was approved as part of hoping to get some development in the Newtown district of Prince Frederick. That's the area of the old Calvert Middle School. Um, and at that time, it had been sitting vacant.
What year was that done?
Um, two thousand fifteen. And I think, in a couple more slides, uh,
Previous board, right.
We'll talk about that text amendment. Two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen would have been the previous board, because we got in in two thousand eighteen.
Okay. And as you, as you mentioned, nobody's been able to come up with a concept that meets that density.
Yeah, that, that's a lot of, um, units per acre. Um, and you have to take in it to a fact that you have to do parking and roads and stormwater management and subtract wetlands. And there's just a lot of factors that go into how much density you can get on a property. And there have been some concept plans done in the Newtown district. And I believe the closest they could get was somewhere between eleven and fourteen units per acre, which fourteen units per acre is pretty common throughout Prince Frederick Town Center as the maximum density.
So raising that density meant nothing.
It hasn't done anything thus far, no.
So there's no need to keep it in there.
We can certainly change it by text amendment.
If an individual were looking at that property, they say, oh, I can put twenty-four units there, but in reality, you can't when you meet all the regulations.
Well, a lot of that has to do with stormwater from state.
Correct, yes.
Can we leave it on that today or this is a session?
Today is just a work session.
We're right at the spot.
I, I'm ready to talk.
We also have.
I asked two questions today, right?
I did not limit you on your questions.
Is it legal, John, or is it? No.
It's a work session.
We have a whole process for text amendments, which, um, takes about six months. But certainly, we're going through the update to the master plan now and we can include.
You said I wasn't supposed to laugh today. But there, we did have a discussion about that months back. And we did hear some feedback from the community about a project that's being planned. And at that time, they said, ho, we think we can get more than fourteen. But I think what Mary Beth is telling us today, that to date, they still can't get more than fourteen.
No.
When you factor in all the requirements that are needed to be done.
Another requirement is open space, so they have to provide that as well. So when, when you take all of that into account, it's very difficult to get that many units per acre.
And not even bringing T D Rs will change that, right?
No.
No, that, I mean.
It's fiscal.
They have to buy up to that amount because they have to divide by four, as I said earlier, and then use T D Rs to buy that. But it's just not feasible to get to that when you take into account all of the, the other regulations you have to meet.
Commissioner Gadway?
Yes, sir. Mary Beth, so people could have a reference in their mind, and so I could understand the reference. I believe it's Allnut Court where the apartments are and the townhouses over on the other side of Prince Frederick. What's the density over there in reference to that fourteen, maybe twelve, ten?
So that is the village district of Prince Frederick Town Center. And their maximum, um, density is fourteen units per acre. And I don't know that they met that. Very close to fourteen units per acre. Thank you, Carolyn.
Kind of wrap their head around it.
Yes.
If you want to see what fourteen units per acre looks like, drive down.
Yeah.
Drive down that road.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And except for Newtown, Prince Frederick's consistent fourteen across the board.
It is, yes.
No matter where you are.
Yes, no matter what zoning.
Now, the other town, town centers, there's some variations.
Yes.
But as far as Prince Frederick, except for Newtown, it's consistent across the board, fourteen. And as you mentioned, we've almost hit fourteen. So fourteen is a reasonable number that can be accomplished.
That can be.
Under disease zoning and requirements for stormwater and all those different things.
Yes.
So, so Mary Beth, my question to you is, let's, let's just say Beach Tree for reference. How long, how, how long have they been able to be able to build apartments on that property since nineteen eighty-four, right? They could have built them in nineteen eighty-four there if they wanted to.
That, I, I have done the research in Lesby, um, but I have not done the research in Prince Frederick. But, um, it's probably pretty reasonable to say. And, and I know it goes back to at least the early two thousands because it, it was a proposed apartment development then.
Back to eighty, eighty-three, eighty-four. So it would be an assumption that Prince Frederick surely was at least the same.
I would imagine.
People don't understand that the commissioners don't vote on to approve that or to not approve it. That, that if the, the person's property is zoned to do it, it goes before the planning commission and a planning commission actually approves it.
They approve it based on the regulations that are in effect, that have been in effect. And really, that's the whole point of this, is to let you know how long these regulations have been in effect and, you know, yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They keep saying that commissioners are building up this county and we're not. It's not the commissioners building up anything. It's been in place since nineteen eighty-four. And these people are just now opting to build on them and they have the right to do it under the county zoning ordinance.
That's correct.
That's been in place since nineteen eighty-four.
Yes.
Mary Beth, to go to Lesby, that was eighty-three. But then, two thousand five, I think that original plan was produced, wasn't it? Wasn't that when it was, when it was, uh, sent to the planning commission way back then?
I know we had some plans down there. I don't, I don't know.
Because I, I think when that whole shopping center was put together, the entire piece, because I remember, I mean, I think I was driving a beer van back then, hearing about, um, the, the proposal of everything. hearing about the proposal of everything. And then you remember the whole mess with the way it was supposed to face and had to be turned. I mean, that was a big thing down there. And then what Commissioner Conkey just said, nobody did anything with it.
Right, the land remained vacant.
It sat for twenty-some years.
But had the potential to be developed, yes.
And one variable, and by the way, acknowledge and thank Planning Commission member Steve Jones for being here. Sewage and water is another variable.
Absolutely. You can't achieve even, gosh, one unit per acre. You can get a little bit smaller without water and sewer. But as soon as you go more than one unit per acre, you need water and sewer.
That's a good point.
Yes.
Does the same acreage still apply? Like, so I want to say down down my way, isn't it, Mary? It used to be you had to have ten thousand square feet per septic. It was the tank, then the backup and the backup to that. But didn't that even get stricter? Hasn't that?
Yes, because.
Drain fields.
Yes, the drain fields got bigger and.
So how much square feet do you? Because that's a quarter acre. So how many square feet do you need now in the county? Somebody builds a house per septic.
I want to say it's closer to fifteen thousand.
Wow.
And and you have to be thirty feet from the well and thirty feet.
There's a lot of regu- and you have to do stormwater management. And, you know, there's setbacks and forest conservation. And it just it's tough. And absolutely, you're not achieving anything over one unit per acre.
And it's important to be that strict because, you know, there's an area, and I'm not going to say it out loud to cause panic because when you generalize. But there's several areas that their next step is a holding tank.
That's correct, yeah.
You know, and I have friends of mine, they'll look at a property and they'll say, hey, wow, like, two phone calls first to you and to Matt Comer because they 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 buy this, they think they're going to do some such. And stay around saying, no, you know. And and I I agree with a lot of these subject tanks because of the pollution and the water and everything. We get the testing every year. It just it can't handle it. It was when nobody lived here, it was different.
Right.
But now we got ninety-some thousand.
Ninety-two.
And it's a it's a different.
It's going to be interesting with that bill that passed where the people that have rental properties have to have their water tested every year, too. It's going to be very interesting to see how that plays out.
Mary Beth, also, I heard people talking about nineteen eighty-three, that stuff hasn't changed or this or that. And just for clarification, when did the fourteen dwelling unit per acre go into effect? And when did the reduction from five TDRs to one TDR per multi-unit go into effect? That wasn't back in eighty-three, was it?
No. So the with the creation of the town centers, so as each one of those came into being and had their master plan adopted, and then their zoning ordinance, that's when the fourteen units per acre came in, with the exception of twenty-four, that was a text amendment. The TDRs evolved through the years with the two downzonings being how many TDRs you had to buy. And then in two thousand, I want to say fifteen, I may be wrong, we changed it to the step step down for the type of unit. When we went from five TDRs required for a lot greater than ten thousand square feet, three TDRs that it was single family on property less than ten thousand square feet, two for townhouses and one for apartments. So that is only in the Solomon's, Prince Frederick, and Lesby Town Centers because they have water and sewer. So and I want to say that was around two thousand fifteen, but I.
That's right.
Did you say that was also in Lesby Town Center?
In Lesby, yes. And actually, that's the next slide.
This is on the same time the density was changed to twenty-four for Newtown.
I didn't see it on our on our sheets on Lesby. Caught me by surprise.
Mary Beth, may I?
Yes.
Commissioners, Mark Close County Administrator, one of the, I think if I could get any point across to the citizens that watch this or follow a comprehensive plan or a town center master plan is simply that the correlation between your question, Commissioner Gadway, in what has changed since eighty-three. So if you go back to seventy-four during the Pleasant Peninsula and you establish the fact that Calver County wanted to retain its rural character, that won a national award for the process, right? And for the vision. I think the problem that we've always had is that the comprehensive plan has always set the vision, and the vision has been consistent all the way up to two thousand and nineteen. That vision hasn't changed. And the basis of that vision is to protect the rural character of Calver County and to move what growth is out there into those at one time receiving areas, now town center areas where you have sewer and you can actually concentrate growth. Which is why what has changed is the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance increases the density and allows for the comprehensive plan to live its true vision. So what has not happened is that if the vision of the Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of this county want to see something different, they have to grapple with the idea that you still have all those TDRs and all those lots out there that we're talking about. Folks have a right to build on them if we want to to really retain that rural character. We still have to figure out where we're going to move the density. The zoning ordinance, and this is the key part here to me, has always lagged too far behind. So when we talk about updating the a zoning ordinance back in two thousand and five for Prince Frederick, you look on the front page of that document and you see eighteen updates to it, eighteen changes. And I know the number, Carolyn, might be one or two more or less, but it's around that number. So what that tells you is that the comprehensive or that zoning ordinance should have been updated a long time ago. When you have that many changes, it's it's not you're not supporting the vision any longer. So I I think Mary Beth and her staff is where and we created a budgetary response to keeping these town center master plans and zoning ordinances updated. That's why for the first time ever, I think you're seeing two town center master plans going forward at the same time. It's actually by design so that we can catch up. And they can be those zoning ordinances can allow the vision to hold true. But that's where our focus has to be. And we're talking about density, that's in the zoning ordinance. It's not in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plans really haven't changed as far as vision. The zoning just truly hasn't kept up. And that's the focus that's going to be coming up in the future.
Because all of those changes were triggered by a request.
A request.
From someone.
That's correct.
And that request gained enough momentum, whatever that request is for, enough momentum momentum to become a text amendment and go through the process successfully. And, you know, none of us envisioned in nineteen seventy-eight there would ever be ninety-two thousand people in Calver County. Even though we planned for it, nobody knew what that would look like. And to Commissioner Hart's point, until they see these apartment buildings going up, we talked about them, nobody envisioned what that was going to look like. And now that it's happening, there's this response, we don't like that, from certain individuals.
Sure.
Because chances are, I would have never dreamed as a kid that that was feasible. Never dreamed. I mean, and 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 I was I understood when senior apartments came out. I understood that, I did, you know. Because, you know, they can't power wash a house anymore, cook right. But I've always said Calver is a bedroom community. I've never seen why there would even be a want to build it, you know. So I.
You hit the nail on the head. There's there's people that get older and they don't want to cut grass. They don't want to do all the things. They want the amenities of a public pool, and they want to be able to walk in their community to go shopping or things like that. And and there's a need for for that.
Commissioner Gadway, I just noticed that on the charts, the sliding scale isn't there under Lesby.
That's why.
That's why your question, but it is on on this slide. So yes, that that is a correction that we will make.
I tried to do my homework last night.
You did. Thank you for picking up on that.
It should be a test.
Yeah.
And we just spoke about the sliding scale, which occurred in two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So town centers are receiving areas, but one mile outside of the town centers have also been included in the zoning ordinance for years as receiving areas where you can use TDRs to increase density in the rural community and the residential districts. The two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan took some of those one mile areas and proposed to incorporate them into the town centers so that we don't have to measure that one mile anymore. But we are still debating in the new ordinance how we're going to handle those one mile radiuses. So that's certainly a topic that you're going to be hearing again in the future. Growth tiers. In two thousand twelve, the State's Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act, also known as the Septic Bill, essentially was a third downzoning for the county, especially in the tier four, which is primarily Forestry zoning districts, FFD, which are now limited to a maximum of seven lots. You cannot develop more than seven lots in the tier four. So you can no longer do a major town center, which is eight lot, or sorry, a major subdivision, which is eight lots or more.
So just just to highlight the point, for those people out there that say, well, once you grant density, you can never take it back. We've done it twice. The state's done it once.
Yes.
You know, so there's no guarantee when you buy a piece of property that today says you can have seven lots, you're going to have seven lots next year. Because it can be taken, and it's been through court, and it's legal. So you can downzone anytime you want. And as long as you don't take all of their ability.
Right, they still have the ability to do seven, but could have done much more in the past. Yeah. And then I included a slide just detailing how we came about creating the addressing the bill here in the county. And then we adopted our growth tier map in April of two thousand seventeen. And it's actually included in our comprehensive plan as required by state law.
So have we overlaid in tier one the amount of land that's preserved and the amount of land in tier one that's not?
So if it's preserved, I don't know that it can be in tier one. All of our preserved properties are in tier four.
I meant tier four, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I have my tiers backwards.
Yes.
Tier four.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no preserved land in tier one. In tier four, have we done that analysis to see how much land is in tier four that's not preserved? Because those people don't have many options. I mean, they've lost their ability to develop in reality. So their only option for any equity, if they wanted to go down that path, would be through a preservation program, which is I was just wondering what that delta is also of. How many people are out there that?
That's a great question because since we've stopped.
Right.
Adding to that. And I and I get it because like back to our earlier conversation where you flood the market, but.
Right.
So when we created the tier map, we fought very hard to keep land that had potential development in the tier three. I mean, we went parcel by parcel, trying to get back to the map to keep to the letter of the, there we go.
Mary Beth, does that go back to that meeting that we had where the state required?
Yes.
Big land grab, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, yeah, there again, we had to put preserve.
And then, please stop me if I'm wrong, wasn't the threat basically if you don't adopt this?
Then we couldn't do any subdivisions.
Right, then everything was done.
In any any tier, yes.
Yeah.
So we had to do it.
They would come in and draw the map for you.
Yes, ultimately. But until we adopted the map, we could do no major subdivisions anywhere.
And I remember you guys trying to push back with their everything. And at the end of the day, they were like, no, that's what I thought.
Right, and we did win some of the battles to keep some land in tier three so that it still has development potential. But there was specific criteria, especially for preserved properties, that they had to be in tier four. So I I can try to find the numbers from when we do that analysis, a general.
Yeah.
undeveloped, tier four, not preserved.
Because like you say, we've got a moratorium on creating more APDs. Those individuals would only have limited opportunity for preservation if we continue that.
That's true. And then they could only develop seven lots if maximum.
Not we don't have any large tracts left. But if somebody owned five hundred acres, seven lots is not very much considering what they had before this got enacted.
That's true.
Does it apply to family conveyance as well?
It's total.
Yes.
And I never understood that, I got to be honest. I mean, if I got a piece of property, I want my son to be able to live on it. You know? I mean, I I get not having, you know, nine thousand homes there. I completely get that because it it shifts everything, you know, from infrastructure, everything. But your own family, and I don't know how you dance around that. I mean, I've had people say, well, what if they get divorced and all that? Well, that's the family's problem, you know, it's not mine, you know, but.
We have to be very.
Property.
Yeah, absolutely. We have to be very careful about the what-if game because we can't predict what's going to happen.
I mean, it's like you say, try to try to regulate bad behavior, you just can't.
Linda Kelly would always argue that. What if they have fifteen kids? We could end up with more lots on the property than it would have been granted through normal zoning. We can't do that.
Well, and we also, you know, there's large farms out there, and people will come, and they can do their three family conveyance lots. And then, you know, say the original owner's gone and there's great kids.
You know, a family would own a big piece of land and, you know, and grandparents, and then the kids and the that just to me was just America. I mean, you know, and the family was all right there. And I mean, the country was built that way, I mean, with the settlers and all. I mean, it was, and then we say, hey, your son or daughter can't live there. It's just, I don't know how that sets with me. I just, I don't know. Stone it out there.
Any other questions about the growth tiers?
I was involved on the other side when you all were doing that.
Yes. So the text amendments I was referring to earlier were done in two thousand fifteen as a result of a request that was submitted. And that's fifteen oh eight A increased the maximum density in the Newtown district of Prince Frederick from fourteen units per acre to twenty-four. There was also a fifteen oh eight B, which removed a condition from single family detached dwelling units, which required at least fifty percent of the site be reserved for commercial office or industrial. So in the village district of Prince Frederick Town Center, it was called the fifty-fifty, you had to develop fifty percent residential, fifty percent commercial. They removed the commercial from that so that you and I think that is another regulation that helped the apartment complexes that got built because there was no longer a commercial component attached to that.
And the EC had a combination requirement, too, didn't it? The EC zones, didn't they have a requirement for commercial?
They still may have. There are still several zoning districts that do. We only removed it from the village district.
But to date, we've had nobody shown any interest in doing a combination development. They do one or the other.
Correct.
And they have no interest in.
No, we haven't been successful with that. And another regulation that affects density is adequate public facilities. In nineteen eighty-eight, the county adopted the adequate public facilities regulations to help ensure that schools and roads are adequate. The current APF regulations just include schools and roads. We've had some amendments done to the adequate public facilities for schools in two thousand three, two thousand eight, and two thousand eighteen. And just minor edits have been made to the APF regulations for roads.
But legally, you can only hold up a project so long with adequate public facilities.
Well, it was seven years, wasn't it?
And we reduced it to six.
Yeah.
How about there was some discussion during the comprehensive hand plan update about including, no, that's not, I'm sorry. But adding additional conditions under adequate public facilities?
That's correct.
Is that working through a process currently?
That is would be included in the Calver County zoning ordinance. And that is actually slide twenty-three, we're almost there.
Oh, okay. That's what happens when you ask questions.
And now schools are underpopulated now, so it's not even an issue.
Except for northern.
Yeah.
So I've put a lot of the language out of the adequate public facilities regulations just for you and the public to read. But as far as the roads goes, it those are analyzed by traffic studies that Public Works requires when a development is submitted for review.
Don't we have, don't you think we need to update that? I mean, you know, the amount of cars that was in eighty-three and how far people go, you know what I mean? Just like with some of these new projects, I it's. I, I, it's a legitimate question, how do you get them out of there?
So maybe one way would be to adjust the level of service. So currently, um, county roads must maintain a level of service C after the full development. And there again, this gets all analyzed during, um, through the traffic study that they have to submit at the time they're submitting their development for review. And in town centers. It's actually, it's level of service D that is acceptable.
Can you explain that?
So it's.
It's just like the grades you got in school, right?
So I'm not, I'm not a traffic engineer.
That was on a good class.
But when you, you're proposing a development, um, you do a traffic study, it's based on average, average daily traffic ADT. Um, and there are levels at which, um, the amount of traffic that's on the roads, passing through the intersections. And there again, not a transportation engineer, civil engineer, but not transportation. And those levels, um, are how fast that, that traffic dissipates through the intersection. And so. A D level of service is what is currently acceptable for town centers here in the county.
Has gotten worse. I mean, that's visible to anybody that, you know, it was so easy to see when COVID was out there, people working from home. I was like, wow, this is like when I was a kid. I had never seen so few cars and then you could see.
But it's still nothing like the surrounding counties.
So I would recommend that you pull the transportation plan that we had done in, I think we adopted it last March twenty-twenty. It lists the level of service for a lot of the intersections throughout the county. And so you can kind of get a feel for, um, what a level of service we're currently experiencing for those intersections.
So during the comprehensive plan update, people were concerned about daily average. And that, and intersection during rush hour is, takes two or three cycles to get through a light. But because there's minimal traffic during the day, because we're a bedroom community, everybody's going to work.
Right.
That it's not taking into account those times of, there's not enough emphasis on those times of day when it's really bad.
Because it's an average.
Out that time, so it doesn't seem that bad.
Looks okay, so I don't, I don't know how we get around that, because I'm not a traffic engineer either. But I get what they're saying, you know, the.
Spot on. When I look at a project and I go, okay, let's say five hundred cars are gonna come out there. If even a hundred are moving from six to seven, that's a problem. And those are the folks going to work. I mean, and, you know, so that's, to me, it's the whole picture. Not just, well, you know, hey, once ten o'clock gets here, you're not even gonna know they're here, but when five o'clock comes, get off the road.
And I think we could do a whole nother work session on this with Public Works, get the experts in here and talk about.
Every project has to do a traffic study, traffic impact study.
Yes.
I think one issue that we've come to realize is that it just looks at that section of road in that project. It doesn't look at the cumulative effect on the rest of that county road. With the effect it has on the intersections that get that onto a state road.
But I don't think you can hold somebody that's building something to that, you know what I mean? You can only hold them to that intersection, right?
There are limits that, that you, we can set to how far they have to analyze.
Limits.
Right.
I mean, but to, to me, you have to look at the total impact, because.
Right.
You know, we all know we're, almost every place in this county is one road in or out.
Yeah, but you can't hold them to improving more than the intersection. You can't make them improve the road two miles down the road.
No, but I think, I think you can look at the stress it's going to put on it, you know, so if you're gonna put X amount of cars to get from A to B, you can't say, well. Okay, they got out of the shop and, I mean, out of their, out of their area and they made it to route four and then you're done. I think you gotta look at the impact of what that does.
I mean, I, I think we bear some responsibility, because we're creating the environment for that traffic. And we can't say, we did it, now state you at the six.
Hold that person accountable for it?
That person may not have to pay for it, but they may just be told no, because there's too much traffic gonna be generated by that.
I don't think you could tell them though, can you?
Attorney says we can.
You need to go to the mic.
You need to come to the microphone. We can only hear you without the microphone.
Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director, Planning and Zoning. I just also want to point out that part of the problem is our major. Arterials are, um, owned and managed by the state. They have a different level of service, uh, based on statewide. Um, you know, so, um, when, when we say that we apply a level of service. D in the town centers, their, theirs might be lower. And we cannot, um, impose improvements upon state highway. So I just wanted to point that out.
Right.
Point. And I don't mean improvements like making them widen the road or whether, I just mean the effects of, once a project goes in. You know, the, 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 like Pat Nutter used to always say, you know, you do something over here and it affects something over there. Some project goes in and now all of a sudden, and I got to see it down home with Dominion. When Dominion would do certain phases and the hours would change, they'd have a crew coming in at three o'clock. All of a sudden, we're like, where'd all these cars come from? And the normal flow of doing business and traffic was impacted every time. And I remember, uh, having a spirited conversation with a guy, he couldn't understand why he couldn't get across the bridge at three o'clock. And I'm like, because that section of folks are getting off at three o'clock. But that was a temporary project. This goes forever. And that's my biggest fear is it's not, can they get the car out of their parking lot to route four? Okay, they get it there. What happens when it gets on route four?
Right, and if you read the state transportation plan that they have for us. It says that traffic will be fine as long as we do X, Y, Z. But if you look at X, Y, Z, we haven't done X, Y, Z. So, you know, we have responsibility on both ends. We have responsibility for creating the issue and we have responsibility for correcting the issue. If we're not gonna correct the issue, we have to take that into account, into the decisions we make on how much of density and where we're gonna allow it. You know, state highway says, as long as you build a Chesapeake, is it Chesapeake on the east? Prince Frederick will be okay. Well, there's no talk that I've heard that we're gonna do that, and based on what it would cost and environmental impact. So if we don't do that, state needs to go back and evaluate their plan and say, well, wait a minute. Maybe Prince Frederick can handle this many cars if you're not gonna do X.
And you've seen areas where, you know, without that type of foresight, they've had to do bypasses. Because the areas couldn't handle it anymore. I mean, we just got back from a conference that I remember when that bypass went in down to Ocean City. You know, before that, you just sat in Salisbury trying to get through, very much like how Prince Frederick is. And then, of course, that bypass, it knocked like twenty minutes off that run. You know, and we've seen, look at Hughesville, when they put that bypass in, I remember many times coming home from work, sitting right there, trying to get to that two thirty-one light. So I don't know that we have the ability to bypass Prince Frederick. I don't know if we have the millions and millions of dollars. I mean, we can't get an easement sometimes for a driveway. So I don't know how you're going to, you know, and I knew that was thrown around years ago about a bypass. I just don't know how feasible that is. I just don't, I just don't think you can build enough roads to get you out of a problem, I guess is where I'm going.
And I think we do have to pay attention to the state transportation plan and the things that it requires and make a decision. If you're gonna do them, then do them and we can move forward. If you're not, we have to take responsibility for our actions.
And we can include planning of those roads in the master plans now.
If we're willing to pay for them. It's always the sticking block.
True.
Is it worth?
Well, right, right.
Is it worth the cost?
Right.
I mean, that's, at the end of the day, it's all about money. So is it worth the cost? You know, we've talked about that before on other projects. Uh, we've talked about that now with projects.
And Calvert's all about quality of life. You know, it's not like, you know, um, you're hubbing some big city and you're there because it's close to work. You know, I remember as a kid, you know, it was always, oh, we drive an hour to everything, but we used to say, yeah, we drive an hour to it and we leave it there. You know, I mean, that was, kid you not, that was when I was a kid, my pop drove to Department of Transportation in DC one hour. And you could get to Annapolis and all these other places, but we would leave the traffic, the congestion, the, I mean, and that was.
Sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. So what we were speaking about earlier, in the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan, we did include considering expanding the adequate public facilities. To include other topics such as water and sewer, stormwater management, solid waste and recycling, fire rescue and EMS services. And law enforcement services. So these are all things that, um, we'll need to certainly work with other eight departments and agencies. To include in their regulations as part of our review, um, of plans.
Right, because they're all impacts from decisions we make on density.
Correct, yes. They're impacted by every house that gets built, absolutely. So if you had any other questions, um, I can certainly entertain them at this time, but we are updating the zoning ordinance currently. We're very close to our third draft, which we feel will be comfortable to release. To start taking through the review process with the planning commission and the commissioners, um, and getting public input on. We need to know what changes you want to make to density, if any.
Proposed timeline for that?
We, it's back at the consultant. Um, we did a lot of work on it and.
Is this the same traffic consultant guy?
No. This is.
We're gonna ban him.
Go back to the comprehensive plan, um, when we were working on that. As part of that contract, we had a subcontractor we were working with to do the zoning ordinance. It's a firm in Chicago, um, that we, so, um, we've been going back and forth tweaking. And I think we're getting to the place where we're comfortable, hopefully by the end of the year. Getting something out, yes.
And what's the timeline on the Prince Frederick Master Plan?
The Prince Frederick Master Plan, I believe we are, the draft is out there for the first round of comments. So we're working with the planning commission, we'll be going back to them in September to discuss comments that we've received. Um, however long that back and forth goes, but, um, we'll be bringing their recommended plan to you. Once they're comfortable recommending a plan, the plan.
So we really don't know what that timeline looks like.
We don't. How, it depends on how many, um, planning commission meetings it's gonna take to get through.
There's a review in there, a state review in there, right, that's at least sixty days, so we know it's gonna be at least.
After the first.
Three months, yeah.
Yeah.
To get through all of that.
Yes.
At the minimum.
Yes.
Right.
But we could take the recommendation.
So that's January two?
Yes.
We're gonna have fun in January.
We're busy.
Between now and then, though, I mean, granted, it's not a lot of time. I mean, as soon as September, it's three months. I mean, if there's any, I, I mean, do you know of anything that, that has to be addressed before then? There's no major development or anything like that on the books. Because to me, going forward, there's no reason for it, because it potentially could all change.
Right, it wouldn't be until we have n- not so much the master plan, but the zoning ordinances. Until those get adopted, the regulations don't change. They stay in pla- as it, we've just reviewed today.
And then, once it gets to us, that process is a minimum of?
It's a public hearing. We'll, we'll probably do a work session first, um, a public hearing. For the master plan, for the Calver County zoning ordinance. It's like, I don't even know how many chapters we've got to. We're gonna bring that to you in chapters at a time. There's no way we can sit down and go through the whole zoning ordinance in one sitting.
So even when it gets to us, that's months.
Months.
Before completion.
Yeah.
Once you do public hearing, comment periods.
Yes.
Review.
Yes.
And then, if there're significant, substantial changes made, it has to go back through some of that previous review? Attorney, Mr. Attorney? Yes.
And this started on the last board. And they did a lot of the work.
It's, uh.
We'll be lucky if we have it done in this board.
It's the government at its best.
And I know I seem impatient.
Really?
But I had a former commissioner, and I'll leave my name out, and make sure I don't spill nothing, and he took a salt shaker. And we'd all just got elected, and he said, okay, and it's gonna be the fastest four years of your life. And it is. And you think you're gonna be able to get to this and get to this? And I, and you, and I, I won't touch zoning without public input, no way. But it just takes time, and COVID did not help without being able to get people in a room and things of that nature. But my fear is, as Steve is a historian, when did impact fees go, and you would think I would have this burned in the brain. Forty-three hundred to, uh, thirteen K roughly, is that two thousand five? There was this onslaught of builders pumping permits in like they were printing them out back. And I don't wanna see that saying, hey, Calver County's gonna tighten the belt potentially. Now we need to, all these things that we've had sitting around, start doing it. So do we have that ability to say, hey, uh-uh?
So when you adopt the resolution for the change to the zoning ordinance, you have the opportunity to write in there when it takes effect? And at what point a plan would have to be concept plan, preliminary, have final approval? At what point you wanna?
What, at what point are they vested?
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm twenty percent, but I would caution anybody that thinks the floodgates are about to open up, no. You know, to just start wreaking havoc, because we can't afford it and there's so many rewrites that need to happen.
But the implementation date that you're talking about, that's at the end of the process.
Right.
So when you're going through, to Commissioner Hart's point, when you're going through three months of, you know, there's a lot of opportunity in there. Is, is what he's talking about.
And I would caution, don't exercise it. Save your money, don't do it. So.
So.
Because you could get to the end and say, no, we're gonna require plan approval and no one.
Don't, don't be picking up the phone and calling up here and going, uh-uh, I, I got it in under, under the radar, no. So just be respectful of the process.
So do I understand you, if we do suggest changes and we ratify the changes amongst the majority here? That we could put in the stipulation that says this is effective as of this date, without it going, and then you guys are ratified? I, or did I misunderstand what you said?
So that would be at the end of the process. So once we've been through months of public comment and changes. And right now, today, I'm just looking for any guidance of changes you would like to see. So that we bring the draft to you with those changes in them as we go through the process.
Gotcha.
Well, I think the density, we've talked about the irony of the twenty-four units is something that needs to be addressed for sure.
Okay.
And, uh.
And I think.
I'll say it, because I've said it before, I've led that discussion, the TDR requirements need to be looked at.
I agree.
And we did.
Sir.
Did it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Does that concur?
To be looked at, we, um, just had a year-long off and on meetings with the TDR committee. And they recommended that they stay the same, so.
It's a recommendation.
Right.
We would take under advisement.
Absolutely.
And that, the public facilities ordinance, I believe we do need to make.
Yes, I agree, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, um, we could have a, a whole day, work session on the adequate public facilities ordinance. And.
Sir. Commissioners, it, it has to be all day and it probably has to be more than that, because any one of those topics up there is a day-long, could be a day-long discussion. There's so much criteria that goes into that, there's so much information that goes into it. So that when the, the attorneys get involved on the developer side of the house, to, to say that you're wrongly, uh, holding them back. What you wanna do is to make sure that everything's nice and tight and legal.
So we could start scheduling those work sessions now.
And we can, but it, it's, it is zoning, but it's, that's where it's accounted for, but no, we can absolutely, just to get the idea of what you're looking at. One point I would like to make about density, as we talk about, uh, lessening the amount of cars that enter the road in the future. Although the town, the comprehensive plans say, reserve the rural character of Calver County. In nineteen ninety, uh, seventy-eight, when those APDs started to get processed. You took away the density within the APD. And what happened was, the growth happened around the APDs. Almost sixty-seven percent of the growth in Calver County did not happen in the density areas of the county. It happened in the rural character or the rural areas of the county. And I think, uh, the comprehensive plan in two thousand nineteen was hoping that, you know, we could pulse enough of that density in there. So that we, we were preserving the rural character of Calver County. So it's gonna be a challenge, and when the commissioners go forward and you look at preserving property, preserving the rural character. And also moving density into the town centers and taking a look at the TDRs. You lessen the number of TDRs that you require for a unit, then you lessen the number of TDRs that you remove from the books. You require more TDRs per unit, then you remove more TDRs that are out there. So it's a juggling act that I, to say that you can't get it right, i- it's not that. You're just not ever gonna make everybody happy, and that's your challenge as we go forward.
But we haven't reduced development in the rural areas. I mean, we've seen an increase in development in the town centers, but none of the actions we've taken so far. You know, to the naked eye, it looks like we've. we've taken so far, you know, to the naked eye, looks like we've slowed down development in rural areas. The people that move here wanna live on a two-acre lot. You know, they want trees and grass. And if that wasn't true, the developers wouldn't be building them as fast as they can and selling them a year out, before they can actually build them. So it's the nature of the beast of where we live, that people like the rural atmosphere, and they move here, and then when things change, they don't like it. Because I'm here...
And even for their own protection, to that point, going back to septic. So many people have built out early on to the extent of that lot, and cannot believe that a holding tank is coming. And then the property value is nothing at that point. Because who in the world's gonna sign that contract and pump that stuff out? They're gonna pick something else. So...
But that's, that's an unforeseen consequence, because when those houses were built, it perked. It met zoning. But over time, we've learned that that soil is not capable with that type of system to handle that, and those individuals now are paying the consequence of that. But you live and learn. I don't know how, moving forward, we fix the holding tank issue, but...
I don't know that you can.
It's, it's an issue that's gonna continue to grow, especially in certain areas. But yeah, there's always gonna be unforeseen circumstances that we really can't fix with a Band-Aid. But it's the nature of the beast. So anybody else have any words of wisdom for Mary Beth?
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to say that now, I think if people were, were paying attention to the trials and tribulations of planning and zoning, it, it's, it's a tough job. It really is.
Absolutely.
And that's a great presentation to clarify a lot of things if somebody doesn't understand it.
I've had fun with Carolyn and Mary Beth, and you, and Greg Bowen over the years, so I understand.
And it's not just density. You can't just set how many units per acre. There's a lot of other factors that are affected, so...
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda, it's the Office of the County Attorney redistricting. So it's about time to get that process started.
Yes, morning commissioners.
Morning.
John Doris County Attorney. This one does not require as much participation at state level, but we are still waiting for some state data. So let me get into the memo here. We're talking about redistricting, specifically the county commissioner election districts, not the delegates or the senators' districts for the state. In May of two thousand eleven, following the two thousand ten census, the Board of County Commissioners appointed a redistricting committee to advise on the boundaries of the three commissioner districts. The two thousand eleven committee was modeled closely after the committee that was established by the Board in two thousand two, after the two thousand census. In two thousand eleven, that committee was comprised of nine members, five of which were appointed by the county commissioners, one by the Calver County Democratic Central Committee, one by the Republican Central Committee, one by the League of Women Voters, and one by the NAACP Calver County Branch. Technology services provided the current district boundaries mapped with the two thousand ten census data. Calver County is and will remain divided into three election districts, absent changes to the public local law, like what we saw last year, that was proposed but did not pass. Calver County Commissioners have the authority to set the boundaries of the county election districts by the Code of Public Local Laws of Maryland, Article Five, Section One dash two oh two. The state and federal constitutions and laws generally require the voting districts to be substantially equal population, and the due regard be given to natural boundaries. That being said, of course, all of the county commissioners are elected at large. That means while one of each of you must be in one of the three commissioner districts, and two are at-large commissioners, the entirety of the county votes for all five county commissioners. You don't run by your districts. So that substantial, equal population is a little more flexible than it might be in other circumstances. We also address one question that's likely to arise, is voting population versus total population. Twenty sixteen, the Supreme Court heard the case of Evenwell versus Abbott. Planners argued that the district populations ought to consider only the number of registered voters or eligible voters, as opposed to the total population counts. Court ruled unanimously that state or locality can use total population counts for redistricting purposes, and therefore, the census data sets regarding household size, without correlation to voter registration, are both necessary and relevant. And as of the writing of this on August twentieth, and as of today, the fine detail data is not available regarding that census. It's with, I believe the Maryland Department of Planning has it, is refining it, so that it can be used for purposes of creating precincts. Just for historic perspective, in two thousand two, the first district population was twelve thousand six hundred ninety-three, second district was fourteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven, and the third district was fourteen thousand six hundred eighty-eight. In two thousand ten, first district population was sixteen thousand four hundred seventy-three, nineteen thousand, the second district in nineteen thousand ninety-one, and the third. So you can see those numbers aren't exact, and because of the way commissioners are elected, they don't have to be exactly the same. Physical impact, staff costs are already budgeted, there's nominal additional supplies and materials anticipated for the commission members. There will be assistance from TS, there will be the participation of the Elections Board. Ms. Hatfield's already reached out to us, and is anxiously waiting to get this underway. Conclusion and recommendation, we're asking the Board to consider and provide direction on how to proceed with creating the two thousand twenty-one Calver County Redistricting Committee.
So John, can you talk a little bit about the history of how the last, the makeup of the last redistricting committee, and how they were appointed or chosen?
Sure. So there were nine members. One of each county commissioner appointed one member, so that's five of those members. The Democratic and Central, Democratic Central Committee and the Republican Central Committee each appointed one. The local League of Women Voters appointed one, and the local chapter of the NAACP appointed one, for a total of nine. They all met, they looked at the data that was available, working with TS. This time, instead of paper maps, they'll probably be able to use interactive electronic maps to help look at the boundary and set those boundaries.
And do they make recommendations to us?
They do, because by the way the law is written today, the Board of County Commissioners establishes where those three boundaries are, has the authority to. Does not have to go to Annapolis for approval.
Will that be done before this election?
In speaking with Ms. Hatfield, I know she would like to have the state districts set, so that she can match up precincts. But it is anticipated that this will all be done before even the February date of, uh...
The filing.
Certainly before the June date of the primary.
Certainly. It's hard to file when you don't know where your district is.
Correct.
So ultimately, we make the decision where those lines are drawn?
For county commissioners.
For county commissioners.
Correct.
Not delegates?
Not delegates, not senator districts. Just county commissioner districts.
When was the last time it was done again?
Twenty ten.
In two thousand eleven, it was done based on the two thousand ten census.
Okay.
Two thousand two. It's, so it's every ten years.
Every ten years.
They send, they send.
Did it change drastically when they did it in two thousand ten, from where it was previously?
The boundaries did not move.
Didn't change anything.
They didn't move?
They did not move.
Okay.
Two thousand eleven boundary recommendation was the same as what existed from two thousand two. And the Board followed that.
So I guess the question today is, you've heard the previous committees' makeup and process, is that what we wanna follow for this time? So staff knows how to proceed.
I would assume.
Okay.
Is there a reason or basis that we would want to suggest a change?
Just, we just wanna make sure we have an opportunity.
Is there anybody we're leaving out that you wanna have a seat at the table, I guess?
Yeah.
Is the question.
Yeah, you heard what was covered before.
I mean, I would assume it would probably come back very similar as in the past, I would assume. Looks like the way the numbers, percentage-wise went, it seemed, but, you know...
But as far as the committee goes, it's nine, five appointed by us, and then we ask organizations to make appointments, representatives.
And just to be clear, when people hear redistricting, this has nothing to do with school lines.
It has, it does not change the school.
Right.
That's correct.
So is that process okay?
On me.
Okay.
We'll solicit the input of the two central committees, the League of Women Voters and the NAACP, and certainly each of you, please consider who you might wanna have appointed. Bring back it for appointments soon.
So have they ever opened it up for people that wanted to serve, show interest?
My recollection from two thousand eleven was at the end of that process, so I didn't start here till August of that year. But I believe each of the commissioners identified who they wanted to appoint. But if you'd rather it be advertised, we can certainly do that as well.
I, I believe, being here, we, I was here, and we, we just went with an individual choice.
Okay. I was just asking.
Yeah, no, sure.
Yeah. So we're, we need a motion?
No, sir. We will bring it back for appointments as, as soon as we get the data. We're anticipating the census data, the refined census data will be available the end of October, so there, we do wanna have this board panel before, before that data gets here.
So will we see, before we make error appointments, will we see who the representatives are from the organizations? Because that could impact who we might wanna appoint?
We'll certainly ask for their, their recommendations and...
I'm just thinking ahead that, you know, Commissioner Wiens may want somebody that's the League of Women Voters is gonna appoint to be their rep. So for his, for any of our preparations, if we had a little bit of leeway, it would eliminate certain people.
Sure.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna show up that day, and all of a sudden, you know, people we wanted to put on are already been appointed...
Right.
...by someone else. So if we can figure out a timeline for that, might be hopeful for us.
Okay. Very good. We'll ask for their, their appointments within, I would like to have it by the, towards the end of September, so you still have an opportunity before October's out. And if we can have the first meeting of this group, get them knowledgeable and oriented with where the boundaries are today, before the data comes in, they can start thinking about.
And we anticipate October, when we'll have the...
End of October.
The end of October. So we still have plenty of time.
Yes. We do, but then, once it gets here, we need to really hustle to get our work done, and hopefully, it'll match up with the Senate boundaries and the delegate boundaries. For, for the purposes of precincts for Ms. Hatfield.
Right.
Elections Board. And then, of course, they're setting up the three early voting centers for June.
Yeah, she's got her hands full.
She, she really does.
But the General Assembly has to approve those state districts, so it's gonna be late January? It'll have to be the first thing they take up in session.
It will be, and then, if it goes to court.
I was gonna say, I, I'll be shocked to get it done.
Yeah, but they gotta have it done by the filing deadline, because, I mean, if you're a state legislator, and you don't know where your district lines are, how do you file?
That, I, I could see it defaulting back to where it was, because I, I mean, I think they just lost so much time with COVID, and I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how those wheels run up there, but...
We're not too far off of when the census data came out, two thousand. Maybe four months behind.
Are they still, are they meeting in person? Because I talked to one delegate a while back, and she wasn't even going to Annapolis.
They are debating, discussing that currently, actually.
And I knew a lot could be done with Zoom, but it's not the same as being in a room. It just, just, you know...
So when, when the speaker was here a couple weeks ago, I asked her, and she, she was very confident that it'll all be settled in plenty of time for filing, but that does include court issues, if there are any?
Challenges, absolutely.
Yeah. All right, we good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Public comment.
We'll have to yield to TS to identify whether there's anybody on the line. I was not able to make a phone call.
Uh, there is at least one user on the line.
Okay. Thank you. For those that are on the phone, we're gonna ask you to identify yourself by name and address. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your telephone number when you're asked to speak. You can press star nine to raise your hand. You'll be given two minutes if you're speaking as an individual, or if you're the designated representative of a group, you'll have five minutes. So please press star nine if you wish to speak. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
Uh, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. We'll ask if there's anyone in the room that wishes to speak in public comment?
Hi, it's Cheryl Henley, Chesapeake Beach. During the discussion about the planning and zoning, one issue I think should be considered, the developments, the residential developments don't seem to have recreation areas. It doesn't seem to be required. And I know in some jurisdictions, if you have a certain number of dwelling units, you must have recreational areas, tennis courts, pools, et cetera. And I don't know about the southern part of the county, but the area that I live in, I really don't see it. I see these massive developments, and there is nothing for the children, not to mention, we don't have a whole lot of recreation centers as well. So I think it's the AP, the public facilities discussion, I think it belongs there, but I think we should add in that area, so that people who are building, that they do have recreational facilities for the kids. And maybe at the same time, we'll increase our rec centers, but if we don't, we can still take care of it during that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gadway?
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the course of the last few weeks, I've learned a lot from our tech services and our CMR via our YouTube channel. Just even last night, I was sitting there watching the YouTube channel, and I was picking up the slideshow and the Board of Commissioners reports. It was very enlightening to me. I was kinda saddened when I looked down and saw that there was only three hundred and ninety-nine other subscribers. I know I subscribe to it. I would like to urge everyone in Calver County, if you know what YouTube is, please get on there, look up Calver County Commissioners, and like, subscribe to the channel. You'll get updates, you'll get videos pushed to your, you know, suggested to you about twice a week, once, twice a week. The guys put a lot of time and effort into it. It's good production, it's good value, it's great content. So thank you to the, to the guys that put, the guys and gals that put all that information together. Hopefully, we can hit a thousand subscribers by the end of the year. On a sadder note, I just wanna... I just wanna touch base and let people know that there are still civilians left in Afghanistan, for lack of a better term, behind enemy lines. And I want all of us to remember those people, and, and...
Also, the, I saw an article where the animals were left behind, the service dogs, which is very sad.
Just, just keep that in your heart, and keep those families and, and people in your heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
To echo Commissioner Gadway and, and everybody who was lost over there, I, I think I saw one serviceman has a baby due any time, that will never see their father. Just, unbelievable. And those folks that are getting tore up with this hurricane, I mean, you know, you, you know, unfortunately, I've had some friends of mine, they've lost everything to fire. And I'm sitting back thinking, I said, you know, you lose everything to fire, and it's horrible, horrible as that is, but your job's still there, there's a hotel. Their job's not there, their hotel's not there. I mean, these poor folks, I mean, and these towns, it's, uh, so my prayer is out to them in that somebody gives Mother Nature a hug, because she has been upset the past couple years, I mean, with fires out west, and, boy, something's gotta break. So just my prayers and thoughts out to them.
Thank you. Commissioner McConkey?
I would just reiterate what Commissioner Gadway said, keep the soldiers who've lost their lives in, in our prayers, and, and let's get our other people home. Go get 'em, whatever you gotta do.
Thank you. Mr. Wiens? Mr. Wiems?
Well, in addition to Deputy Administrator Sallow's birthday today, and happy birthday. It's also my mother's birthday.
That's right, that's right, I saw. I wish her happy birthday on Facebook.
I just put in a Freedom of Information request to try to get the, the correct date so we can figure out which, which, uh, how old she actually is, you know.
His mother or Linda?
So just happy birthday, Mom.
Happy birthday.
Yes. Shirley, you can't be serious, Wiems. Sir.
You know I know what movie that's from.
Yes, her name is Shirley. Um, just to the faculty and the staff of the school system and, and all the students, just, uh, it's an exciting day for them this year, uh, the beginning of the school year and, and just, um, I commend them and, and wish them well, that's all I have.
Thank you. So I'd mentioned earlier, schools back in session, be watchful of the buses and the kids out about waiting for buses. Make sure you're paying a little extra attention. And last week, we had a very successful job fair at the Prince River Volunteer Fire Department. If you missed that, I think if you reached out to Economic Development, they could probably give you a line on some jobs that might be available. So, uh, as we comment here very often, everybody's hiring somebody. So you should be able to find something that meets your talents, and we hope that you can take advantage of that. Vaccinations, Dr. Polsky was in earlier today during staff. This county is at a rate that's almost as bad as it's been since this started. I, I understand fears of long-term effects of vaccinations, new vaccinations. Uh, I would tell you that in my life's history, there's been plenty of vaccinations that were introduced, and nobody knew what the long-term effects were, but we were forced to take them when I was in school. And, uh, look at me, I turned out the way I turned out.
Is that an endorsement?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to figure out when Shaw did that to you.
It was one of them, you know, they just lined you up and stuck you in the arm, they didn't ask anybody. But seriously, you know, consider, cuz right now, you know, a large, large majority of the issues that we have are people without vaccination, so I just ask that you really reconsider and, uh, make a, make a decision, and hopefully it benefits all of us. Um, this coming weekend is Labor Day weekend, it's a holiday. And, um, I wanted to remind people that we're gonna have a, the Baltimore Pride Two-Tall Ship in Solomon's at the Calver Marine Museum, you can go online and get tickets. I assume if you contact the Marine Museum, they can help figure out when you can get a ticket to go on a two-hour cruise, not like Gilligan's Island, we're told. But, uh, you can get a cruise on the ship this weekend, so that'd be pretty interesting and, uh, don't have to travel very far. But we wish all of you a very happy and enjoyable Labor Day weekend, and I guess we'll see you in a couple of weeks. So with that, do I need a motion?
I'd like to.
Oh, a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, you all have a great day.